Underwriting support for this program is provided by the Eureka Teachers Association's School Board Liaison, Philip Middlemiss. Where can you find gourmet organic coffees, a friendly hometown atmosphere, and beautiful views of Humboldt Bay and beyond? It's Has Beans Cafe, open every day at Second and I Street in the heart of Old Town Eureka.
Let's get back into open session and ask Board Clerk John Fortham to report out from closed session.
On item C1, there is no action taken. Item C2, no action taken. Item C3, no action to report.
Okay, and tonight, we have representatives from ZO Barnum High School to lead us in the political allegiance and probably share a little bit about their school. And Principal Sherry Jensen, it's my duty to say goodbye.
So good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Sherry Jensen. I represent our district by serving as a principal at ZO Barnum High School. Tonight, I have the distinct pleasure of accompanying several of our students, who will present some of the outstanding attributes of our school. But before we begin, Isaiah will lead us in the flag sweep.
Please stand. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of the board, thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Nicole Romano. I came to ZO my junior year. One of my first observations at ZO was the careful welcoming staff and friendly, open atmosphere. ZO Barnum serves a whole student. In fact, I remember, for example, one day I came in really late and had a stressful morning, and my absence wasn't so good, and I had talked to Ms. Jensen and Lori, Lori's our secretary, and they made me, you know, remember just to keep my head high and positive, and everything will get better and everything happens for a reason, and made me remember why I'm at ZO and to, just, what do I say? Just to, you know, just keep my head high and earn my credits. But while the staff, while the staff at ZO shows the care, they also teach you a lot. The classroom instructions, the teachers, the teachers do help you learn many ways. They make time for class discussion and give everyone a chance to voice and speak their opinion. They also give lessons each day and give their time and their chance to speak, and then they'll give a time for their students to ask questions, and they'll instruct anything you want or need them to. We also get another part of the classes for individualized work. Of course, we have a teacher and then we'll have aides come in that walk around, and when we need help, we of course raise our hands and the teachers will come and help us individually. There are many ways to earn credits. First of all, is classwork. The more classwork you do, the more credits you earn. And also homework at ZO is a privilege. And the more classwork you do at ZO, the more homework you can get, which means the more credits you earn in homework. Also, we had basketball this year at ZO, and a lot of our boys and even I attended. And practice, and practice, you sign up on a sheet and you get credits each day for your participation. Game days, they also got many credits for their participation. ZO Barnum motivates students, you know, in a big ways. For example, if students are under stress, or, you know, we all have personal lives and things happen, they'll give us an opportunity to go in the office and cool off and have a choice to talk to them, or if we need time alone, we'll have that time alone to ourselves. But also, they'll remind us and give us, you know, hope and remember why we're at ZO. And they just give you the hope and energy to get your credits up. Well, ZO Barnum is a, in my opinion, is an excellent school, and it's a good way to earn and get your credits up. It has done amazing things for me this year. I've had a very rough year, and being at ZO, it just has helped me earn my credits, and I now have the opportunity to either decide either I want to graduate early or go back to Eureka High my senior year and just complete my senior year at Eureka High, and I could only have four periods there. So I do have different opportunities going to ZO, and that was really excellent. And in my opinion, it's just helped me a lot. Oh, and now Dart speaking.
Hi, my name is D'Artagnan Duarte. I've attended ZO for two years. I'm currently the Interact president. The purpose of our Interact club is community service and to donate to good cause. Some of the events that we have done, we went to Sequoia Park and we cleaned up, you know, the premises. We also helped set up the Humboldt sponsors rummage sale. We donated 125 toys for the toy drive. We donated to the food drive for the Salvation Army. I don't know how many cans, but we donated, I remember it was a high number. Not only does our Interact serve community, but it also gives back. We also donated to the Warriors Wish Foundation. It was $70. We donated to the Sequoia Humane Society. We donated 150. And the socks for soldiers, we also donated 150. The Interact has provided me with leadership skills. For example, Ms. Smith, which is currently our science teacher and math teacher, she sent me to a leadership camp to work on my leadership and to become a better president. My future plans are to go back to EHS, which I'm currently trying to make up enough credits to do for my senior year. And now I'd like to introduce Vanessa, who will discuss more about our school's program.
Over the past two years, I had opportunities through ZO Barnum, community service, academic, and sports programs. First, I have served our community by helping elementary students learn about healthy eating and nutritional facts, participating in youth relay for life, and helping our beaches and clean up, and with blood drive. I don't even blood for blood drive. I have read to elementary schools and like stories. And not only have I had opportunities to serve, but I have earned over 100 credits. I will meet my graduation goal by May. I plan on attending Humboldt State to further my education at ZO Barnum. I have also had the opportunity to participate in sports. We played, I was in the basketball team, and we got to the second place. We almost had first place, but we lost by two. The years that ZO Barnum has provided me with fun, fun experiences, now I'd like to resume my faculty work.
I'm Ross Gobrak, and I'm the fortunate person to be the finance teacher at ZO Barnum High School. And first, I'd really like to thank you for the opportunity to show our student work in your hall. There are so few public venues for our students, and I know that a variety of our local community comes through here and get to see it. And I think it's really important for our students to be able to show their work outside of my classroom. So you provided our community with a glimpse of our students' creativity, which is mind-blowing what they can do. They're just amazing. And you have fostered pride in their work, that they can see it up in a public place and know it stands on its own quality. Our exhibit includes examples of student work reflecting ZO Barnum's cross-curricular studies. The Kingdom of Life PowerPoints are from Ms. Smith's science class. The Controversial Issue paper is from Mr. Prada's English class. The Endangered Species are all from my art class. We do touch on things in many different ways, in many different venues, and enrich our students' understanding of very complex issues and give them an opportunity to express that understanding in different ways. Each original artwork was created to be publicly shared. Each of the PowerPoints was created to be shared. The paper, this is an act of courage. When you create something on your own and you put it out there for everyone else to see, that is not done by the weak of heart. That is done by someone who has become strong and believes in what they do. And you have provided that for our students. Business leaders, visionary thinkers, and the National Education Association have recognized that the ability to be creative is a key 21st century skill. It is native to the arts and one of the primary processes learned through arts education. The arts promote work habits that cultivate curiosity, imagination, creativity, and evaluation skills. Study of the arts can help produce globally aware, collaborative, and responsible citizens. In providing the opportunity for arts education to our students, you have helped them develop as courageous, creative, reflective individuals. As a parent, as a teacher, as a citizen of the world, I thank you for this opportunity for my students. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. And we are much informed about what happens at ZO Barnum on a daily and weekly and yearly basis. So you are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you would like, but we will also understand if you have other activities that you need to get to this evening. Thank you again. Are there any adjustments in the agenda?
Yes, sir. We will be pulling item K24.
Okay, we'll move down to information. Are there any student representatives here tonight? Item H5, Citizens Oversight Committee Annual Report to the Community.
And I'll be presenting that report, or actually, that report is provided for you in your board packet. Believe it or not, this is the eighth annual since the bonds were passed and work has begun on our bonds. As you guys are well aware, the Measure T, or the elementary school bond, has slowed down dramatically. The charges for Measure T that were included were primarily for Lafayette, and we had the window in the wall that were repaired for the cafeteria. And we're still working on getting that signed off by DSA, but the project has been completed, and the amount of money remaining in Measure T is actually, it's pretty much gone at this point. We're still getting a couple of bills that are trickling in, and we've actually, we'll probably end up covering a little bit of those bills through general fund, but probably in the very low thousands of dollars should it become necessary. But we are aware of a couple of bills that will still be coming through. Measure S is also dwindling down, and there's really about a quarter million dollars left in Measure S. Most of the work that happened in Measure S this time was at Eureka High School and dealt with roofs. But if you look through, they have all their, the entire list of work that was done this year was included in it. The big part goes to defining conclusions, which is on page four. The group that we use as auditors for the district, the firm of Perry Smith LLP, also performed the performance audit on our bond. It came back with a very clean report once again, and so we're pleased to see that. And we will continue at least another year with the Citizens Oversight Committee. They've met a couple of times this year and are planning to meet in the next couple of months to keep an eye on the expenditures as they happen. They'll continue to come back and just update the board in regards to what they're spending the remainder of the funds for. If there's any questions, I can have to answer.
I have, in this report, it says the remaining balance in bond measure S is $900,000.
Yeah, a lot of that, some of that money's encumbered in different places, so we're being very conservative, saying we probably have about a quarter million to spend with some planned drawings that are going on.
Oh, so that quarter million, $250,000 is already paid back?
It's unencumbered at this point. A quarter million is unencumbered. The difference up to the $900,000 in our projects that we've taken a serious look at, those would include the tennis courts at Eureka High School and refinishing those, also an improvement to the interior of the girls locker room, specifically lockers, as well as the boys locker room, and doing just a little bit of fix-up in the boys locker room as well. So those have been encumbered. The projects haven't started yet, but that's what the COC has looked at as probably their next steps with that amount of money.
Any other questions, Board Member? Next, my tenant's report.
I'll go again. As you guys are well aware, we had our first extended walking Wednesday, which started from the district office parking lot. We had about 30 students this morning, and we all made the trek over to Grant School. A lot of fun to see the kids.
Washington.
I mean, Washington School, sorry. Well, that'd be a fun one, huh? Sorry, Grant's my next one, so, no, sorry, we walked to Washington School. That project still is going strong and with the community's support, as well as the support of the group that is putting that on. So we plan to continue to walk, and you guys are invited to join us any Wednesdays at 7:30 a.m. Some of the stu-, I'll take that back. Most of the students are far more chipper in the morning compared to their superintendent. Yep, for the last couple of days, we've had ELACHIEV up here. ELACHIEV is the program that we're working with them in an effort to bring up the student achievement of our English learner students. We had a representative from ELACHIEV up for the last couple of days, and along with cabinet and administrators at each site, walked and went through classes at Eureka High School, Grant, and Alice Burney. The prognosis is good. What we see is a very strong beginning on teaching the standards for English learners in Eureka City Schools. There are a lot of good things going on right now, and I will steal from Marta Serna, who came up and represents ELACHIEV, and her statement was, she definitely sees a lot of seeds that have been planted and are growing in regards to this program. And if we continue in the direction that we are going, that'll just continue to expand. It is really exciting. I invite any of you guys at any time that want to walk through any of our ELA classes, especially at the elementary level, to see those students participating, being active participants, and really the specific style of language development that we're working on with those students is really a pleasure to see. I spoke to the auditors in regards to the performance audit for the bond, but for the school district, we use the same audit firm, and they come up a couple of times a year, and it is that time again. So we have our auditors in the district office and also moving out to sites to check their books as well the week of April 25th. Just an update, we have three candidates who have filed for the board position. Our meeting is next Tuesday night, the 12th, at 5:30. I will be attending the Small School District Association Conference next week. Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday next week, I will be down in Sacramento. The good news is, as I've told you in the past, that SSDA does a very fine job of representing schools, and especially a lot in the legislature and budget matters. The downside is that Eureka City Schools has declined enough enrollment that we are now eligible to be a member of the Small School District Association. And also on Tuesday, Tuesday night of next week, the EHS boosters will be having their dinner and auction at Sherry Heights Casino. Again, it's next Tuesday, April 12th, and it starts at 6:00 p.m. Lastly, I was in on a strong note. Lastly, the state of California is still in flux as to what they're going to do financing. The headline was 11.2 billion, down 15.4 billion to go. Governor Brown, in his attempt to have the tax legislation continue on, the extension continue on, has met with very partisan politics. Their attempt was to get a couple of Republicans to cross the aisle and help them bring the measure to the California voters. Governor Brown has stated now that that attempt has failed, and they're wondering where they're going to go from that. They're talking about the revenues and whether the tax extensions are still on the table, and can it be done without bipartisan support? There is rumors that they're going to peel off, attempt to peel off four Republican votes for a tax extension that'd be approved with a two-thirds vote in the legislature only, and therefore wouldn't have to go to the voters. But they're also talking that the strategy may be to extend some taxes with a simple majority vote, even though that amount raised would be far less and still require deeper cuts. The real distressing part of it is if it's a cuts-only budget, California's looking at another $15.4 billion in cuts, and they're stating that this would have a significant impact on schools. First off, the Proposition 98 guarantee would drop by $2 billion, or about $350 per ADA or per pupil. For Eureka City Schools, it's a cut of about $1.2 million. However, they believe that the actual cuts may actually have to be deeper, and the Legislative Analyst Office in the state has prepared a scenario under which K-12 would be cut $4.8 billion, or approximately $800 per student. Enough's enough. I am hoping our legislators wake up. Eureka City Schools cannot sustain an $800 per ADA cut. We just cannot, and we are not the only ones. There would have to be significant legislative change. There would have to be significant change in a lot of other arenas for us to even come close to that type of cut. You know, if you look at a $350 per cut, being a $1.2 million cut to Eureka City Schools, if we get up to the $4.8 billion cut, it's just undoable. And keeping in mind that California has one of the lowest per pupil spending amounts in the nation. It's amazing that we let it get this far. So we'll have to stay on top of it. You know, we're in the process of preparing a budget right now. Our budget takes into consideration the potential for a $350 per student cut. We can sustain that at this time. It would require some very serious planning for the next couple of years if that type of cut remains. We can't draw up a plan that shows an $800 cut. We just can't. It requires us to go a different direction. Would that be effective July 1, or would it be mid-year? It'd be mid-year cuts. Unless they do something dramatic.
But we said the budget we're going to adopt in June, as of right now, is based on a $350.
It is, yes.
Okay, we'll move to Board Member's reports. Karen? Ready? John?
I think.
And make it four. So we'll move to public comment on non-agenda items. Is there any public comment tonight? Okay, Karen Dunn. We'll move down to the consent calendar. Any questions or concerns or clarification? I have one. Page nine. Okay, item number 22. The facilities update. And it's the sentence, next to the last sentence, "The project is still on target for September 1 when escrow closes on the district office." So the escrow is closing on September 1?
The projected escrow will close on, all the paperwork hasn't been signed, but in all the paperwork that we have, escrow closes on September 1.
Okay, and that's because we don't think we can get this Marshall remodeled and the office moved in, because we can't close until this is out. Okay, so I need a motion to receive a consent calendar. It's been moved. Did I miss that?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to receive the consent calendar. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The motion carries. We'll move to discussion, action, page 23. Board Policy Education for English Language Learners. This is our second reading.
This is our second reading. Included in your packet is the changes that were requested at the last meeting, as well as the inserts that were recommended, and it is all here for your discussion and approval.
Well, I went page by page. Yes. Really? You mean that's not a surprise to you? Now, the only thing I found is on page 48, at the top of the page where it says early advanced, I think there needs to be a D after that. So it's early advanced or advanced and. And that's it?
That's a great catch.
I have one correction to make in the green sheet, just for the record. The compliance review was in February 2010, not 2009. That's in the, in the bisexual of the green sheet.
Board President Anderson would not be aware of the compliance review took place. I make the motion that we adopt Board Policy AR/ E6174.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Board Policy AR and exhibit, which is what E stands for, 6174. Declaration for English Language Learners. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Karen, you will. Aye, Nadia. Okay. All those opposed say no. The motion carries. Thank you, Richard. That was quite a feat.
That's very.
Typing this up and getting it all.
Yes, wonderful.
Okay, K24, we have Paul. And now we are going to L25, Report on ECS Student Information Management Systems, SIMS, PowerSchool.
Tonight, it's my desire to talk about our student information system, or PowerSchool, which is a system that we purchased years ago. A lot of time, effort, and thought went into which system we should purchase, because there are numerous out there, and we went with one that is one of the largest in the state of California that's utilized. My reason for bringing it tonight is to show a little bit of the potential of the program and then discuss some of the challenges that we face at Eureka City Schools, because quite honestly, our belief is that this program is probably operating at about 60% of its potential capacity. This last summer, Marcel and Cheryl and I attended the PowerSchool University during the summer, which is a week-long program, and talks about a lot of the different components of PowerSchool and what it's capable of doing. Quite honestly, I went down to that program to make the determination that PowerSchool isn't good enough for Eureka City Schools and look for another avenue to better meet our needs. And instead, I walk away saying, this is probably the right program, or at least it's one of the best programs that are out there, and then started looking for different ways that we could better utilize it here at Eureka City Schools. So I'm just going to start with a quick overview and then kind of talk about some of the issues that we have and then some of the fixes that we'd like to put in place or that we're moving to put in place. And the reason that I bring this to the board is because our student information management system is used by almost everybody in this district on a daily basis. And when we start talking about making some potential changes to this, everybody is going to hear a little bit about it as we continue to. everybody is going to hear a little bit about it as we continue to move forward, because there are going to be some periods of downtime. There are, of course, going to be some challenges. And then some individuals who are expecting this program to stay exactly as it is or are more comfortable using it exactly as it is, we may shake things up just a little bit. So here we go. I have Vanna over my shoulder. Just some, just some quick pieces. PowerSchool has reports that help us on a daily basis, not only for us at the district office, but also for our principals. And these are really kind of blurry slides. And Kathy, if we could kind of turn off more...
I can't, I'm on my white bank.
And quite honestly, some of these are blurry, because we did that on purpose, just so it's... Anyway, this is an enrollment summary, and this is a specific school. And if you look down the left-hand column, grade zero is K, and this is an elementary school. So, or actually, this is a district summary, I'm sorry. So it goes 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. And as it goes through each column, it shows in different ethnicities where our students are, and even breaks it down by male and female. And this also goes down in regards to the high school and covers our entire district. We use this when we're building courses. We use this when we're building schedules, and we use this when we're laying off and/or hiring teachers and making personal decisions. We can also drill it down even a little bit further. This is a student schedule. And if you look through, this person has a zero period. And you can see that they have world history, and then they have global myth, and that's a CP course, which is college prep. They have theater arts, they have mixed ensemble, they have German, they have chemistry, and they have algebra down at the bottom. So you can see a student's schedule. Administrators have access to this at any time. And many times, when a parent's calling and you have your computer screen in front of you, this is something that you pull up and you're taking a look at what teachers this student has and what classes this student is in. This student has a great attendance record. This is a week-by-week attendance record for the student. You can see this is a high school student, so it breaks it down by period. This is very helpful, again, when parents call in or when teachers are looking at a student's attendance record. We can even start to look at, are they missing specific periods? Are they tardy to specific periods and start addressing those issues? This is a discipline log, and we've cleaned this discipline log up greatly, took all the names out and everything like that. But this is a, this is a screen that has different access levels. So administrators can see everything that's in there. Certain teachers and certain other individuals that have different access points to the schools have different access to this. So there are some log entries that an administrator can see and that other individuals that can pull it up cannot see. But when you're dealing with a student and you're looking for what is their past record? What have they done? Is this an issue that they've dealt with before? You can always go back to the discipline log and find out what's going on. We'll talk a little bit later in potential how this is going to change for Eureka City Schools because of requirements from the state. We also have a power teacher component, and I'm just going to show this piece, because it was too hard to try to black out every, all student records and different things like that. This is what a teacher first pulls up in power teacher and the icons across the front of that. The first one is their seating chart and attendance. So each period, and for elementary teachers, they do period, they do attendance one time a day. They have a seating chart. The seating chart even has pictures in it, so when we have a substitute teacher in a classroom, they can correlate the picture with the student who's sitting in the seat and make sure that little Rich Lance is not covering for little Greg Hawk, who's really off somewhere else, but paid Rich to sit in the seat for him. The second one is where they enter their grades. The third one is a power lunch. They can, they can pull up the, how much money is in their account. We can also pull up what is for lunch. The next one is a student information system, so that can pull up all the necessary contacts, their parents' names, and things like that. The fourth one, or the next-to-last one that looks like a printer, which is hard to see, of course, is different class reports that the teachers can run. And the last one is one that some of our teachers are using, but has a lot more capabilities. It's web assignments. So teachers can actually put assignments in there. And as a parent pulls up in the parent portal, which we'll go to in a minute, it lists all the assignments and can even tell if your student's assignment is complete or not. This is a parent portal. This is a, is a pretty strong student and pretty good grades. This one is grades and attendance. So again, you can see their classes, and it lists all the classes, and then it lists their quarter-three grades. And it also lists their absences. So again, this is a student that looks like came late to school one day, because they had three absences, or one absent each in zero period, first and second, and it looks like they left early one day, because there was only one absence there, but hasn't missed a complete day of school. Also has all the grades and also lists all the tardies. This is in the parent portal, and parents are given access to PowerSchool. And they can go in at any time and they can check out where their students are. They can also check their student's attendance and see if their student has been attending school. And again, has, breaks it down even to when they're tardy to class or when they're completely absent. So these are some of the pieces that PowerSchool uses, but there's a lot more capacity and capabilities for PowerSchool and pieces that we're using a little bit of, but not using enough of. The first one is a huge one for Eureka High School and Zane Mills School, and it's the scheduling. We are still utilizing too much the old whiteboard in the principal's office with a teacher's name and moving around numbers. And you know, that's exactly how I was taught to do master scheduling a long, long time ago, and we're using too much of that. PowerSchool has the capability of asking students what they'd like to have, what they need to have to graduate, and that can even be done through Cooter as well, which is the program that we're now using for students to start selecting their pathway. Well, PowerSchool can mine that information, and it'll build the schedule for you. It'll take what teachers are credentialed to do it, and it'll start moving blocks of kids in and out of schedules, and then it'll come up with a proposed master schedule for you. And then it'll also kick out a list of what are called conflicts. Students who couldn't get their first choice or second choice or who may have open periods. Because when you start looking at some of our singletons, and a student needs two singletons and they happen to be taught at the same period, it'll give you the percentage of conflicts that you have in your schedule. Then you can attempt to move a couple of things around, and it'll come back up again. And then again, tell you the percentage of conflicts and what it is. It'll even list out what the conflicts are. And it'll say, you know, 3% of your conflicts are because you have, you know, geometry, or I'm going to go higher than that, calculus and theater arts. So you now know that if this is the only period I offer that advanced calculus course, that those students are never going to be able to take theater arts at the same time unless we move one of those in the schedule. So you can attempt to move it, and when you move it, then you can look to say, "Okay, I may have fixed that problem, but I may have created a much larger problem." One of the other pieces that scheduling works for is as we're building the employees that we need to teach different things, it'll come back and tell us if we have the need for advanced courses and not enough people with the appropriate credential to teach that course. And then we can start looking at maybe somebody that we're utilizing only a percentage of... Let's say they have a, and Michelle Smith, who was here earlier this evening, is a great example, because a credential in both math and science. Maybe we're utilizing too much of her math credential and not enough of her science credential, and therefore it's leaving holes. The other piece that PowerSchool has the ability to do is do what's called walk-in scheduling. Once the schedule's built, if we have students who come in late or who are having serious issues with their schedule, they can pull up PowerSchool and immediately start doing walk-in scheduling, where that student will have a schedule before they walk out that day, and then again, start showing you all the conflicts that are in that. We're not using it. Enough for this, as a matter of fact, we're barely using it. This year, both Rich and Chuck, principals of Zane and EHS, are starting to use PowerSchool. But we need to not only start to use this, we need to start using it much sooner in the school year. We also need to start training all of our counselors, our counseling techs, if we have some, and other individuals on how to use this, so that it can be used by a lot of different people and built out in a lot of different ways. PowerSchool has the ability to do advanced reporting. What advanced reporting is, is kind of like a, as a teacher or as an administrator, if you have a query, if you have a question about your student population, if it's how many of my EL students are currently taking AP courses and what is their GPA in each of those courses, you can actually ask for specific reports that give you specific data that you can then use to make decisions in different areas. We are partially using a standards-based report card in PowerSchool. It has much more capabilities. It has the capability to directly pull the standards and list them at every single grade level. And then the teachers use assessments. They can correlate those assessments with the standards, and it'll automatically generate report cards and show where students are and results to mastery or, you know, exposed to or not exposed at all. It is a, it has the capability of having all those pieces just kind of fall together. So when we're giving our assessments, and we've worked very hard on benchmark assessments, we know which standards our benchmark assessments assess. So it can then take that assessment data, break it out, not only report it out to us, but also start filling in the pieces of a report card. One of the things that scares teachers is, "Oh, my gosh, it's going to do my report card for me." It's just a start. And then as teachers go through, they can start to validate that information and look for other areas or other assessments that would show a student has mastered a concept, and they can overwrite anything that PowerSchool's already put in there. But it's a great start. PowerSchool has the capability to have full integration with other databases. We're using that a little bit as we use Data Director. Data Director mines out of PowerSchool and it takes information from PowerSchool and pulls it across. So as we start asking for advanced reports from Data Director in regards to where our students are, PowerSchool has the ability to interact both directions with programs like that. And it can either pull in data or it can push out data to more effectively use it. The one I talked about earlier in our log entries is that the state of California is now mandating that you report what's called incident management. They're also mandating that we report out health incidents and where our students are immunized. We're going to have to switch from how we're doing things in log entries. And the log entry will be more of kind of an anecdotal record of where a student is, meetings with different people. If we have incidents where students are suspended from school or expelled from school or a question for either one of those, it's actually supposed to start going into what's called an incident management field, and PowerSchool has the ability to do that as well as the health one. We are currently using PowerSchool to communicate with our parents. And we have, we have a lot. The total logins by parents this year alone has already been 35,445 log entries. The log entries by students is 97,781. We have total logins by both students and parents, 133,226. So our parents are used to, and our students are used to, going to PowerSchool to pick up information. But right now, we don't have enough information out there, or we should have more information so that our parents and our students become partners. The average length of a parent visit is 44 minutes. The average length of a student visit is 43 minutes. The average number of parent logins a day is 161, and the average number of student logins per day is 445. We have a lot of people going to it. We need to start better utilizing it, because we can put things, and some schools have, the high school has their, their daily bulletin is on PowerSchool. You can pull it up there. But there's a lot of different ways that we can start using this to communicate with our parents. And as I said, they're already utilizing, they know to go there. The other interesting piece is that 17.6% of our parents, or 732 parents, are signed up to receive progress reports via email. So that's something that you can do, and at certain times, it'll generate a progress report. As I, as I talked earlier about web assignments, and you'll see it's a couple, a couple further down with web assignments, really not enough of our teachers are utilizing the web assignment piece, and there's a lot of reasons why. And part of it is the system, are some limitations with the system that we need to fix. But again, we've now trained our parents and students to go there. Now we need to start filling those data fields with as much data as we possibly can, so it's an effective communication tool. The integration with the phone dialer is important, because again, as you break it down, as I talked about it, advanced reporting to, you can have different students. You can do the same thing with the phone dialer. You can say, "Please tell me all of my students that are taking AP calculus." And the phone dialer automatically pulls it up, and then the AP calculus teacher can report something that'll go out to just those parents. And we can break it down by any of the fields that we have in PowerSchool. So, and it goes back up to that integration with other databases. That's a database that it can pull across. And then we have web assignments that I've already talked about. But the bottom one is the increased capability for users. And those users include administrators, teachers, parents, and students. And we're not there yet. Vanna? I was worried you might have fallen asleep a little bit. Our issue... Our issue, our issue is basically a lack of database consistency. We have an incredible amount of user input errors. And some of those input errors are just accidents, and some are just complete and utter omissions by individuals who are putting materials into PowerSchool. "Oh, I never used that field. I don't care about it. I'm skipping over it, and I'm just going on." "Oh, I'm not using that field, but what I will use that field for is this instead, so I'm now going to pollute a database by putting in other information." What people forget is that data, that PowerSchool's information sits there and is accessible by many different programs. I talked about Data Director. Data Director goes in and mines data from PowerSchool. If inappropriate data is in there, it's a computer. It says, "What the heck is this?", and then it gets stuck in the middle of an operation. It says, "I'm going to get this." It goes, it gets it, and it comes back and says, "I have nowhere to put this." This is supposed to be a numeric field, and there's nothing but alpha characteristics in it. This is supposed to be a phone number, but I have area codes or non-area codes. Or an X, because it's extension something, which is supposed to be in the next field, but I put it in there that way because I use it. So we have some real database corruption. And we also have what are called schema errors. And schema is, as Cheryl and Marcel told me, schema is when we start creating custom fields and say, one school, or one counselor, or one individual customizes a field and changes it for a small group of students or even an entire school, then when those kids move up... Again, it has nowhere to go with that data, it doesn't know what to do with that data, because you've now created a custom field that's supposed to be a field that's moved up or mined by other things. And people have just kind of done their own thing with it and created what they wanted. One of the interesting parts about going to PowerSchool is prior to PowerSchool, we used SASE. We had, for a long time, a lot of individuals who said, "Okay, I don't care if it's PowerSchool or not. I'm going to recreate this and do custom things to it so that it looks like SASE, because I'm more comfortable using that." Well, that worked for them, but when that kid moves up to the next grade level or the next school, or, and this was a piece that we did not have to worry about when we first started with PowerSchool, if I have, if it has to interact with the state of California for CalPAS, interface with CalPAS being the next one, now all of a sudden, we're sending, we're potentially sending data to the state that is not appropriate. And we've already had some issues with that. Our first kind of look at program improvement district-wide because of our graduation rate, we found was just a lot of the first two, user input errors and then schema errors, where we were saying kids were leaving, but it wasn't being pulled out by the right field, and we reported that data to the state of California. We have orphan records all over the place. We have two PowerSchool databases, and this is where I worry about Marcel throwing something, F-ing from behind. But we have, we have two different databases in PowerSchool, and then they basically have a translator in the middle. And data that you're putting in here or here moves back and forth across, and then the translator in the middle helps create records and make sure that everything kind of stays in sync. Well, we had numerous problems rolling over PowerSchool this year from last year to this year, moving students up and automatically generating the fields. And so PowerSchool finally told us to shut down the translator in the middle for the rollover and then turn it back on after the rollover was complete. It was the only way they could get the rollover completed. Again, it goes back up to the first three pieces that I talked about. When you have fields that, it tries to move it over and it has no, you know, goes to the translator, and the translator says, "I don't know what this is." It gets stuck there and it just kind of spins around. And PowerSchool kept on trying to roll over and getting stuck and stopping. And we had a lot of issues with that, so they finally had to turn off the translator. And turning off the translator, we know that data that was stopped at the translator for a reason, it was wrong, was just ignored. And so it's sitting in one Powers, in one of the databases. It's not sitting in the other one. We have far too many custom fields. And then we have far too much user accessibility issues and rights. PowerSchool is specifically set up as, say, here are the administrator's rights, here are the teacher's rights, here is this group's rights, here are this group's rights. And those people have specific rights to specific information. And they have other information that they can't get to utilizing their sign-in. Well, we know that we have... Well, we know that we have individuals who, who, who found out a way to sign in as someone else or have a different user field. We have some people who previous administrators have given accessibility to places, you know, thinking someone would come and it's not all malicious, someone would come to the superintendent and say, hey, I need to be able to see this. And the superintendent said, Cheryl, give this person the right to see this. And Cheryl would say, yes, but when I give them the right to see this, they also get to see this and this and this and this and this. That's okay. They won't do that, I know, just give them the rights. And we did. And a lot of those rights are all over the place and we really need to rein those back in. And then lastly, we have had multiple hardware and software migrations where we have moved, when Power School first started, it was on a very small database because it didn't need that much. It has grown exponentially because of the number of fields that we've had that we've added and the states required us to add, so it continues to grow and grow and grow and grow. So we've had to buy more hardware. We've had numerous updates to Power School since we started first using it and if you look at the problems that we have with database consistency, that database consistency problem has moved through every single hardware and every single software migration. So what do we do? Oh, Vanna.
I was waiting for you to do the next.
So, let me check. We are, we are working with Power School right now and Power School is owned by Pearson and we are working with them right now to attempt to get our system back to more of a default. The way it's set up, that a majority of schools in the state of California use it so that all of those capabilities come back into play for us. We are looking for the best practices restoration of our system. So again, we're currently interacting with Pearson specialists, both Marcel and Cheryl have done so. Right now we have two of them who are way up there in the specialist ranks who are looking at all of our data, all of our databases, all of our errors and are determining what specialist will best be onsite. When that person, when they finally determine who that's going to be or who that team will be, they'll be onsite at Eureka City Schools and begin to start fixing what we're doing. We may even have to re-enter data in the way of student records, but we've got to. We need to start increasing our in-house training with an expectation that once we have an in-house training, that the best practices are being used around the district and hold people accountable for that. We have already created a data entry position for new students, so every new student that comes into Eureka City Schools will first come to the district office, be greeted there, be talked about what programs we have available, but also fill out their paperwork there so that we know, do we have room in that student, in that neighborhood school for that student? And then that, it'll be entered right there by the same person, so there's accountability and consistency in what we do. We, one of the reasons that we're really attacking this right now is that we have a mandatory major upgrade of both the hardware and software for Power School that's going to take place this summer. We are not confident at all that with our current databases that we can do either the hardware or the software upgrade. Well, that's kind of our plan. I don't have any more slides, do I?
Yeah.
You got that. No, that's summer school, that's a little Jedi. So if you have questions on this, fire away. Sorry for any exhaustion.
So this fall or August? You're hoping to fix things so that we won't have a repeat of what happened last Eureka High School?
Absolutely.
You say all new students come to the district office that need kindergarten registration due?
Yes.
So they're no longer being the onsite kindergarten registration.
We can, we can start the onsite, we'll, we'll start the onsite kindergarten registration so they're still going to their school, so they still get that tie-in, but then the materials from that will go back to that same person, so the data entry will all be the same.
It's like we're something I'm getting in summer vacation.
That on top of, remember we authorized Marcel to put in a new phone system over the summer as well as the movement of this office which has tremendous tech needs. No, Marcel not only cannot take any time off over the summer, our expectation is that he will work 20-hour days.
The same one you put in there.
Top of there.
He's too tired.
His son, his son by the way is an excellent data input operator we might, we might hire.
He's pretty good.
He'll be at kindergarten Eureka City Schools this year.
Oh dear. Well, it's pretty impressive, the capability particularly of that master schedule, that just sounded really cool.
Cheryl, did I forget anything before we move on?
No. And Cheryl has not done screening in the building.
She has a couple of times.
The most of it?
Cheryl agrees with what the problem is here.
She'll only say most.
Focus that?
Okay. You'll only say to most of. You say, switch to Power School in fall of 2003?
Yes.
But I remember accessing my kids' seventh grade records back in like '01 or '02. The, the previous system, SASE, had a portal as well. SASE, SASE is not a, not a bad program, but it's, it's, it's very difficult to manipulate and, and, and use, it's kind of a cookie cutter, one size fits all and some of the, the expansion that we can now do with Power School is available through SASE products.
Actually, Power School has replaced SASE. Pearson owns both and they're doing away with the old SASE. Power School.
You were saying that they have the ability to integrate with other programs including the children's activities?
Absolutely.
Any public comment on this agenda item? We will move on to 26, 2011 summer school programs.
Oh, it's a screen saver, it's good. Eureka City Schools will still be using, it'll be the third slide, will still be operating a secondary school for credit recovery. We use summer school over the last couple of years for credit recovery, we're following the state. The state quit giving money to schools for enrichment programs over the summer and it's something that we can't fund on our own as well. Therefore, our, our summer school has very much become a credit recovery and over the last couple of years went mostly seventh through 12th grade, again, mostly because of funding. This year we find ourselves in a unique situation that we have some Title I money that's available to be used and what we did is cabinet was challenged our administrators, elementary administrators specifically, to come up with some ideas how we could better use that money to improve student achievement. What our principals came back with were plans and they worked together, but they came back with plans on having what we like to refer to as jumpstart programs or programs that get students before school starts next year and, and start to improve their skills before they ever walk in the door on the first day of real school. So we're looking at, we're going to look at a couple of different components and talk about what we're doing for summer school this year. First off, the elementary through eighth grade programs are eligible to be funded by Title I, basically because they're considered interventions and that's what Title I money is for. The first group that we'd like to hit are, is kindergarten academies, which is a jumpstart program again, which would take place in the first two weeks of August or if it's a three-week program, the last week of July and the first two weeks of August and/or the first three weeks of August. What we're trying to do is remain a little bit flexible on when we operate them in, in an effort to entice Eureka City Schools teachers into teaching these courses and specifically Washington kindergarten teachers to teach the jumpstart for Washington kindergarten so they know the expectations, the culture and, and how their school goes about things. One of the real issues that we begin to run into with summer school is we don't have a high percentage of Eureka City School teachers teaching summer school and therefore quite honestly, our teachers are the experts and the quality diminishes a little bit, so, and these jumpstart programs, we really want Eureka City School teachers to do it. So what this program will do is serve incoming kindergarten students, remembering that it's voluntary to participate. We'd like to keep our primary emphasis on our EL students, although that's not the only and ALSPRIN has actually run their jumpstart program for K. They did it earlier this year and it was all EL and seemed to be very beneficial for those students. We'd like to focus on literacy and math, teach them a little bit about school procedures and also give them our self-administration, which is for our EL students to determine their level. Again, it's a two to three, two or three week program depending on what the school would really like to do. Monday through Thursday, 8:30 through 12:30, we find that a lot of parents take off on Fridays and our attendance rates are really, really low on Fridays in summer school, so it went Monday through Thursday. We will provide lunch, we do that through food services and specifically it's a bad lunch. And then we would like to greatly reduce the teacher to student ratio because it is intervention and at the kindergarten level have a 12 to 1 teacher to student ratio. Some of the groups have gotten, you know, and especially at ALSPRIN, one of the things that they did is, you know, they had like 20 and over students and so they did it with a, a teacher and a lit tech. Our desire would be that we grow those classes up, so if there's like 20 students that, instead it's two teachers and we get more bang for our buck with teachers being there. The one piece of this is we would offer these types of things at every elementary school that would like to do it and therefore also funding, there's no transportation for these students. Our next group would be other elementary grade levels and again, it's a jumpstart program, first two weeks of August, same kind of thing, if it's a three-week program, we go on either side. These would serve multiple two-grade students that are currently below basic or far below basic on the 2010 CSTs. Again, so it'd be like a 1-2 or a 2-3 or a 3-4 and again, so we get enough students because this is a voluntary program to, to get a significant enough group. We have a real need to focus on number sense throughout the district and also on language arts skills and we determine these by assessments. One of the nice pieces of our benchmark assessments is looking at our 2010 CSTs, gives us a good idea of where to start, but then we can also qualify some students and address specific needs by the benchmark assessments that we're giving. Again, we're looking at a two to three week program, Monday through Thursday, same timeline, same thing with lunch, although we've upped the ratio a little bit at 15 to 1, we're still trying to keep them real small classes so that those students really benefit from what we're doing. Again, we're going to offer these at each of the elementary schools where there are interested teachers who would like to do it. You know, I, I don't want to slam our substitute teacher pool and/or other teacher who's, teachers who come in, but really for this quick a program and for the desired effect of addressing specific needs is determined by our assessments, we want our teachers to be able to operate these courses. So if there aren't, if there isn't a sufficient teacher interest at the school, we just won't offer it at that grade level. The next slide talks about our seventh through 12th grade and this one's a little different. Again, this is a credit recovery model. In 10th through 12th grade, it's math, language arts, science and social studies and because it is a credit recovery program, we load those at 30 plus per class. At the seventh and eighth grade, the only ones we offer on campus is math and language arts. We are looking at the potential to offer seventh and eighth grade science and social studies through either an independent study model or some type of distance learning model. The reason for that is, is we don't have enough students who need social studies and science, the hard grade we need is in English and English, language arts and mathematics, so we don't have enough seventh and eighth graders to fill classes in science and social studies, but we'll find ways for those students if they need the help. We are also looking at, once again, we did this last year, having an additional offering for incoming ninth graders who are identified by our placement test as really needing a jumpstart in math and language arts intervention. Again, because this is an intervention course and because they are eighth graders, not yet ninth graders, we can use Title I money again and once again, we'll keep a 15 to 1 ratio. So our summer school at the secondary level will, will continue to look the same except for, and we did do it last year, we, we would like to really offer some intervention for some of our incoming ninth graders. We have a very, we have a higher fail rate at the ninth grade than we do in 10th, 11th and 12th and we'd really like to help some of those students out as they're coming in. I thought I'd listen more. The other thing we also do through summer school is we have an SDC program. The secondary summer school runs for 19 days, the dates were up there, it's a week after school begins out, we start again at the end of June and go through July, they have the 4th of July off, so the four-week program only gets them 19 days. We are required by law to offer SDC students a 20-day program and so that 20-day program will have to actually start a day earlier. SDC students or special education students who are identified as needing summer school are also transported. It's a requirement, so Indiana, Indiana are working together to make sure our transportation is in place and we will feed those little munchkins as well.
Questions?
Kindergarten Academy is going to start this summer.
We had one last.
And they did, they had an elk, was it elk?
Elk, ELK Academy, ELK kindergarten academy.
What was the enrollment or attendance like?
We started out with 20 students and we graduated 16 students and it was really a very, a very good start for them and for their families. They all had a little presentation at the end of the eight days and they sang for their parents and showed some of the, the little words they'd written and everything and we had a room full of people and stuff, so it was really good. And their attendance, which is what I've been tracking this year, has been, has outdone what the kids in their same, you know, group have, have done, just to raise their students, so it's been a higher percentage of attendance, so we feel they connected well with the school. But to be fair, many of them stayed with the same teacher. Lea talked the class for us and she's really a very, you know, a kind of electric teacher and really gets them going with everything and they really enjoyed her, in fact, they went to her room the first day even though they had it assigned to the classroom. It was a win-win for all of us, I think.
Okay, so any public comment on this agenda item?
Just a question on the kindergartners. What percentage do you have the data on the numbers that are attending preschool before they come to kindergarten? Or so, Jen?
You know, I don't know.
We, ours are a little bit lower and maybe it's interesting, this year the ones we've taken, they've had us do our preregistrations at our sites, it's lower than last year. Fewer of our students are going to preschool or, you know, any kind of nursery experience. I'd say approximately, ours are about 50, 57 I think percent have gone to something before, but the rest haven't, even if it's a church school or whatever, two-day-a-week thing or something. I feel the public money is probably just not allowing, you know, some of them to attend as much as they have before, less programs.
There is no additional close session?
Yes, people do you ask a question about, I'm hearing that we have a, are doing something different with our lunch, our school lunch program. We're serving it different or we're doing something?
No.
Different? Or it's prepared differently or something?
They're still trying a few different menu options.
Yeah, entrees.
And, and the way it's packaged or.
Well, we, we have soup and it now comes, we haven't had soup in a long time and they tried soup in a nice little cup with a lid on it and it was delicious.
Well, I've just been hearing good things about it. It's not that I've been hearing negative things about it, but good things about it, so I wanted to know if something that would be benefit all of us to know if there's a change and what the change is and how they feel.
Yeah, and they're, they're trying to entreatens and I think we have a little bit more consistency on our employees that are working in there and it's probably helping as well, but no, nothing.
The only complaint I have here is that they put something on the menu and the kids are all excited and excited when they get there and it's something else. That's the.
We don't have much for friends, we may not have much at that moment. Pardon me, we don't have much at that anymore at all. We don't.
That's good to hear.
Okay, we have no further closed session, so the meeting is adjourned.